Why? So, let's move it.
It's a long story.
Alright, so, we're back. Hello, welcome. Um, we're back out of executive session. I believe there's a motion. Yep?
So, I'd like to move that the board find that the administration followed current policy and procedure, and the board supports the administration's decision as to the student disciplinary action. We also support the administration's reevaluation of the procedure that was invoked, which will apply to this student too.
Is there a second for that?
You give it to him.
It's a tough one.
We'll give it to you, Peter. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, so, it's been moved and seconded, and to paraphrase, that the policies and procedures were followed, the administration's decision is upheld, and we're supporting the review of the procedure that affected this particular student. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'll abstain.
You guys are abstaining because you weren't in executive session, that makes sense. So, six to three. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay, moving right along, because we've been gone for a little bit. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda, folks?
Oh, actually, yes.
Yep.
Yes, Emily?
I just thought, I got an email today, and I don't think you get it, Joe, but I know the administration gets it.
Oh, it does.
About the, um, our, the regional board for the Career Center. And we don't have anybody on that.
Oh.
I get these emails because I think it's on a holdover from, I was never on that board, but I, when I was chair, we'd get the emails, so I'd get them. And I think that if somebody wants to do it, they should, because, you know, there's a meeting tomorrow, and I feel like we should appoint someone to that.
Okay.
It's been bugging me.
I'll put them under new business. Anything else? You're right, that doesn't make sense, and I'll fix it at the end.
It's the Regional Advisory Board.
Career Center?
It used to be, um...
It used to be Lindell.
Lindell.
Flashback.
Okay. Okay, so, next, members of the public. Dykes, you have something you'd like to bring?
Not a thing.
And all the other public has left us. Okay, correspondence. I think I forwarded to you the letter from Thara Fuller. It was kind of a letter memo. She actually sent it to us a month ago, and I totally spaced it off the agenda, but she said, "I wasn't the only board chair who did that to her." Did I forward it, or do I have to read it to you?
I got it.
Okay. Essentially, there is a, um, the Laughter budget, which we agreed to support at a higher level, has a surplus this year because there have been some fewer hours at Leland and Gray, some snow days, some teachers have volunteered their time rather than being asked to be paid, and some other programs have not run. So, there's about a $17,000 surplus.
Oh.
Um, and then if, and by the time you go through all of that, in total, there's a possibility of carrying over some 70, $60,000 or $70,000. She's talking about principals shifting $10,000 to a Medicaid allocation for the school year after program's summer camp. She is asking us if we would like our money back, or a cancellation of the fourth quarter billing, and then she's talking about she would like to make requests to reallocate[267.64][267.64]$20,000 of the unexpected surplus, $10,000 to the Explorers Camp, and $10,000 towards hiring a Laughter administrative assistant for 10 hours a week. So...
Well, and I would just say that the administrative assistant is for a very specific object, to get all the sites subsidy-ready, so that any...
So, it's a short-term hire?
So, any family, so it's just for this next year. Just to get all the paperwork and everything up to snuff that would allow any of the sites, starting with the Explorers Camp, to be able to receive state subsidies, which is just another revenue stream, just like Medicaid would be, that are available to families, but it can be quite challenging in getting all the paperwork together, so it's done in a smooth fashion.
So, these are worthwhile expenditures?
Well, that is a very worthwhile expenditure. The other one is the Explorers Camp just doesn't have enough money to run, so she's asking for $10,000 to make sure that it does run. It runs at New Brook every year, or Jamaica every year. I think it's at, Jamaica's doing some work?
Yeah.
I think it's at New Brook this year. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And, or you guys can get the money back that you guys committed earlier. She's asking you because you guys pre-committed money in August and September, over and above your budget. And I believe your amount was between $5,000 and $7,000. That sound about right?
So, the $10,000 is across the communities?
Yes.
Right.
Or the $20,000, I should say.
The $20,000 is across everybody who's involved in the Laughter department.
So, what's the term for us? Did it break it down?
Uh, that's the underspending in learning programs. She doesn't actually break it down to say, um, you know, this much of it is Leland and Gray, this much of it is other.
Well, it's probably based on the size, so we probably have the largest portion, I would assume.
Yes. I assume we have a large, I assume we have, you know...
So, you had four payments that you made this year, and you guys offered an additional sum in August that then got added to those four sums. I'll see if I can find out exactly how much it is.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, I think it's between $5,000 and $7,000.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And can I make a statement?
Sure.
The question is, I'd love to hear recommendation from the administration on this, whether you think that's something that we should do. If you don't have one, fine, but I'd like to hear it if you do.
Sure.
And then I, I just want to say, as challenging as our budget is, and I'm not one to spend any money, and we're going to have to really think very hard about how we're going to make it through the next few years, but I deeply believe that the expanded learning opportunities are really important for our students and our families, in our communities, and I would hate to see them go away. I think they have a real impact, and so, if we can possibly do it, I think we should.
I agree. I think, you know, I think these are really important, I think that's why we gave her the money when she came and asked for it, and I think that, you know, again, the budget, it's coming up, it's difficult, you know, and I'd like to hear from you two, you know, I mean, if this comes back to you, is it going to, is it going to make that much difference?
No, I mean, I, so, one, I think you guys had this discussion in August, September about the value of this. So, she's not asking for any more money, it's just when she recognized that that was the case, the appropriate and transparent thing to do is to come and ask you for using it for a different purpose, because she spent less money. So, I think the same investment goes hand in hand. What I'm telling each of the boards is, it's got to be your individual board, based on your individual circumstances at this time. I echo exactly what you guys are saying. This is absolutely valid thing to invest in, and also, as I've learned this first year, given more time, we can plan for things that don't surprise us, that are underfunded. So, I wouldn't expect that you guys would be in this case next year.
Okay.
Okay? I can't find the exact...
In order to make a motion, do we need a specific dollar amount that she specified? Or are we just looking for support?
You've already committed it, so it's just, you're going to support the reallocation of pre-committed dollars.
So, I would like to make a motion that we repurpose the funds that have already been set aside for Thara, for Laughter.
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of supporting the Laughter program with the reallocated funds, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes appear to have it. They do, motion carries. Thank you, folks. All right. The, um, we have been asked by the Townsend Board repeatedly to please, please move our meeting, because they now meet the first, the second Monday of every month, and so do we. And since the legislature hasn't adjourned yet, but will next week, we could have Emily back on Tuesdays, and I understand that will be easier for more people, and certainly easier for Townsend. So, can we move our meeting night back to Tuesdays, where they, in some people's opinions, belong?
It's fine with me. We have to have the motion for that.
We have to have a motion to move it back. We'll probably have to, like, publish it in the paper or something.
I will make a motion that we move our regular meeting night to the second Tuesday of every month.
Second.
Until this board is no longer in existence.
Ooh! Going.
But what about next year? That's all right. If I miss the meetings, I miss the meetings. I'll follow them, or whatever. I come down sometimes.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on that motion? All right, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, we're back on Tuesdays. So, now the thing at the bottom where it says June 12 or 13?
It doesn't say June.
It doesn't say June. So, I'm a lousy editor. It will be June 13th will be our next meeting. Okay, so, the next thing on the, on the agenda is the preparing for the fiscal '19 budget context clarity and charge discussion.
Okay, does everybody have this?
Well, mine's in purple.
Well, there's a purple one right there.
You get color if you grab one off the table.
You get color if you don't print it on your, on your office. You guys, Dykes, you good?
Did you grab it from here?
It's right there.
I know. Did you get that?
I just am too cheap to switch my laser to color when I...
I did. Okay. You want it?
No, I hate it.
All right, I'm not going to shoot it up there. I've given a copy to him, Rattleboro TV. But Bob and I have been meeting for a month. Lori and I have been meeting for two months, and we really wanted to make sure that we gave the board some high-quality, transparent information early on in the budgeting process, so that we can prepare ourselves for what will be this board's final budget. And, so, if I could just walk you guys through this, and then if you can ask questions as we go, the whole point is to just kind of give you guys the context for where creating this budget will be. All right, page one. You guys got that? Okay, page two. It's your mission statement. All right.
With a spelling typo in the third word.
Yeah. Oh.
Semantics.
All right, sorry, guys. Thank you, that's all right. Now, number three, you guys have definitely seen this, right? Please tell me, you've seen this graph. You know this graph, you understand this graph.
Oh, thank you.
It looks better if you do it this way.
No. Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions on that?
No.
Okay. Page four.
Yeah, I do have a question, actually.
Page three graph?
You're basing, you're basing the, can I?
Yeah.
You're basing the 2021 on, on students that are in schools today.
Right. Yes.
And that is the bottom. You, you, I think you promised me that that was the bottom.
I didn't promise, but that appears to be, the 245 appears to be repeated that following year, but because it's so far out...
But I would say that out till 2030, Vermont's still going to be losing students, so...
I was going to say, are there state predictions that go out further?
I just tried to make it a 10-year, you know? If we go too far, I can't.
It's slowing way down, but it's still going down.
Still blooming.
For the foreseeable future, it's still going down.
So, the blue line is equalized pupils, the green line is education spending. Okay? You got, everybody knows what education spending is? All right, it's the expenses minus offsetting revenues. And the biggest offsetting revenue? Can anybody tell me, for Leland and Gray?
No.
What kind of students?
Special education students.
Fantastic, very good. Okay, good job, Howie. All right, page four. Equalized pupils and spending. Pretty self-explanatory.
It's usually a big difference.
Important to remember, Vermont's state average for spending will include both all your K through 12 spending. So, sometimes it can be less expensive, Bob can speak more to this, for an elementary school student, depending on the size of class, the specificity of the instructor having the schedule. Okay, page four, we're good? Page five, that's the big one.
I don't know, I think four's pretty big, too.
Over 3,000, more than the average.
To emphasize it. All right, so, if we have the exact same amount of education spending, that $5,177,000, and we pay off that deficit of $127,162, your education spending per equalized people would go from $18,663 to $20,404. And the impact on the tax rate is a 34 cent increase. So, that's if everything stays the same. That's in your control. So, in your control, you can't have more kids come. In your control, you can make monetary decisions. All right, everybody good with that? The sobering, page five. All right, page six. It's the same question you guys asked last year, so I just pre-answered it, which is, what would you have to do if you wanted to spend at the threshold? Assuming that the threshold stays the same.
The threshold usually goes up a little bit, but not down.
Yeah, I'm just trying to use, you know, what we know now. It could be worse than this, it could be better than this, but this gives you a good idea of what we're talking about. And then, after I gave Bob all this information, he said, "Okay, can I ask some questions?" So, that's the la, that's the next page. What Bob and I need, and Lori need, is we need absolute clarity from the board, the best that you guys can give us. We're not asking for it tonight, we're trying to give this information to you, so that you guys have some time to think about it, but we want to do our best work for you. We want to do our best work for the community, we want to do our best work for the students, and we need clarity from you all. We need a specific charge from you all, so that we're not throwing spaghetti on the wall, so that we're not disrupting our community and our colleagues, our teachers, our students, without real forethought. We understand that these are challenging times, but we want to be completely transparent, and we want everyone to know what direction we're headed in. So, that's the general thing, and then we had four kind of particular questions that are on that page there. And again, we're not asking for you guys to answer this tonight, but what we would ask is that this can always be discussed at every meeting, until we put a budget complete. We understand it's not easy, but we need clarity in order to give you what you need to make some tough decisions.
When does your actual, like, when do these answers actually have to be real answers? I mean, I'm thinking in terms of some community engagement. The time for the room full of 100 taxpayers telling us what we need to do is now, not in November, when we have to put things back. And we've also done the huge unfair thing of putting you guys through making those hard decisions, and our staff and community through, you know, is it going to happen, isn't it going to happen? I mean, this should be a sort of controlled process that arrives at an end, that we all agree is not necessarily pleasant, but necessary.
The whole collection of students, the high school, think I hate music and co-op, which is part of the job, I get that. There's a, to a degree, like, that's what I have to do, I have to provide you guys the information of what I would recommend if we were at that point. But it's, you know, it is, as Bill said, it's a tough thing to put colleagues on, I'm asking, I'm going to tell staff that, the board want to know what I've been cutting, I'm going to put your job up there. It may or may not be realized, you know, and then there's a room full of 100 people, or even last month, a room full of 20 people, and it's tough decisions that need to be made, and it's not easy for anybody. But it's, you know, the more clarity advanced, the less of those kinds of situations that we both end up in together.
Just to answer your first question, Joe, by the fall. I mean, we need to answer these questions by...
September.
September.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll start developing and thinking about stuff mid-September, probably for us.
It's nowhere near earlier.
Well, the earlier is the better, I'm just saying, we need it.
I think earlier is better. I think, you know, that's the...
That's the latest, I think.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, well, I think you're, what you said is absolutely correct. We should be talking about this at every meeting. You know, the people, you know, hopefully, the public will come now and say, "Okay, you know, what are the sacred cows? Where can we cut the budget?" And the answer can't be, you know, nowhere. You know, somewhere there have to be, I mean, you lay it out pretty straightforward here, $784,000 have to go away. You know, you want it?
Yeah, we need to make this decision now. We need to give our administration the direction that we want to go, and we need to give them as much time as they can have in order to put and gather information, so that we can do our job, which is to run a fiscally responsible school. This is, this board's responsibility. We cannot duck this responsibility and push it off onto the merged board. This needs to be taken care of. We cannot move forward with our revised education system if we keep ducking our responsibility and making tough decisions. I think we need to engage our administration and ask them to come up with a fiscally responsible budget that is under the threshold. They've got experience now, they understand the programs now, they've got plenty of time to research and implement. The responsible thing to do is to put forward a budget that is under the threshold, and I think we need to tell them that sooner than later.
I think, Emily, you had a commoner question, too?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say that this is pretty much unprecedented for us, so we have to treat it like it's unprecedented, which means we have to start a budget way earlier. And we have to put, if, if we follow the path that Drew's suggesting, I think we should, I, I don't, you know, you can't probably come to us with a budget, a draft budget anytime soon, but you can, I think, probably come to us with some parameters around, it's going to take so much staff, or whatever, you know, this, these are areas that we're going to have to get into to cut. And I think the quicker we know that, the better, and the quicker for the community to know that, the better. I really do, I think those, we, we need to see what that's going to look like, and I think we have to work our butts off this summer. You know, we're not going to have a month off, like we often do in the summer, to get to the point where we actually are ready to put a budget together in the fall, that's my belief. And I also think we can answer some of these questions, we can't answer all of them yet, necessarily, but we could. But we certainly can answer some of them, and the bottom two for me, I've already answered those at other times. I, I have to trust the administration to develop, to have the autonomy to develop a budget. I know the responsibility lays on us to, as to whether we're going to support that budget, but, you know, those two, it goes without saying, I think. I'm ready to make tough decisions, because our taxpayers need it, for us to do it.
Howie?
So, my answer to your question is, what the target should be, is to not cut programs. I, as a board member, would prefer to see larger class sizes and core classes than removing entire departments. If you have a one-person department, rather than eliminate that, I would rather see us go from five, four math teachers to three math teachers in bigger math class sizes. I don't think it's practical for us to cut the services or programs that we're offering our kids.
So, I mean, I, I do, part of our reports, which we can get to later, do have the class size stuff that, so I think it was you, Howard, that asked for last time, to talk about, but one of the things that people have to think about, 784, if you think about, from the standpoint, you're talking, I mean, roughly, 10, 10 teachers.
Yeah, you are.
All right. We have, what, 40? I mean, you're talking a quarter of the staff. Can you do that and not cut programs?
I don't see how.
I think, so, I mean, and this is kind, so I, I hear what we're both saying, but this is the frustration of this, this is kind of why we're asking this question, because last year, I got the same message. We need a fiscally responsible budget, we don't want to impact kids. All right, well, this is going to be a challenge, all right? We can't cut, we can't be under the threshold and, and keep all of our programming. It's not going to happen. Bigger class sizes alone is not going to get us there. And, keep in mind, some of the conversations that have happened in the past, when we have bigger class sizes, or we have fewer core teachers, what you end up with is fewer core offerings. So, what goes away? AP Calculus, Probability Statistics, you know, pre-cal? You start to think about, you know, some math support classes that we potentially keep small, pursuits really need more focused attention. What are you offering and not offering, when you, when you talk about that? So, those are the kinds of questions that you're going to be asking me to make, you know, and so I just want people to understand that, what do we, when you, when you think about that sort of idea of not having program go away, that's a, it's a tough one to say. You can't, you're not going to get the supplies and equipment, you know? You're talking about staff. And we can redesign, and we can rethink, and we can do all those things, but if at the same time, you're wondering why your kid can't get into the pre-cal class, because there's a conflict with Spanish III, there's only one section of each, well, that's why, because there's not enough staff to have more than one section of each. And that's why the class sizes are small. Because what we do, enough to have two, two sections so that kids can get into them, there's fewer kids in each section. So, this is all, I mean, it's all kind of how it plays out, and it's, I mean, it's a challenge. So, I just want people to understand, like, what, what you're asking for, make sure you guys have, if you need more information from me about how to build a master schedule, you want me to walk you through the process, talk about staffing, we have the class size stuff, I will be happy, the next couple of months, to have all those conversations, I'll have whatever presentations, reports you need to help guide your thinking. I'm, like I said, I've been doing this a while, like, I have a pretty good sense of how to do this. But I, but I, but that, you know, threshold, no programming cuts. Yeah, that's a...
It's not going to work.
That's tough.
So, then I would like to see a list of the programs that we offer, and how many kids are using...
Each one.
Each one.
Right.
So, we could look at the programs that are least utilized, and for cutting first, and also, but I'd like to see us make provisions for still offering that stuff through the internet. We spent, you know, millions of bucks getting high-speed internet all over this school and the state, and there's online course offerings. Maybe we need to go to more of a collegiate style of instruction, where we have fewer teachers and more teaching assistants to help kids with an online program that we maybe can't offer anymore, but still have a, a teaching assistant to help the kid with the work online.
Oh, because I don't do this, and I honestly don't even know all of the programs that are here, when you say golden cows, what does that mean? What are the choices?
Journey East would be an example.
Well, any, I mean, anything's a golden cow.
Well, of course.
I mean, at the last, at the meeting in December, snowboarding went back into the budget, co-op went back into the budget, music went back into the budget, those are, that's what I mean by golden cows.
Whatever.
A month ago, social worker went back into the budget.
But I mean, it's not English and math, because we're required to have those. I mean, there has to be some things that we just cannot not offer.
But AP programming could be a golden cow.
Exactly, okay.
And those, I mean, when you think about from those standpoints, world language, I mean, you think, can you have a high school that world language? Probably not, but how many world languages? That could be a golden cow. I mean, all the things that, and I hate to say it, but there's some of the things that make Leland and Gray special, other things you have to think about. What are those decisions you have to make? One of the things that, if, if I said to you, we want to talk about this, you would be, no way in hell can we have this conversation about reducing it. This has to exist, this is what Leland and Gray's, this is, this is the essence of what we do, you can't reduce that. Those are the things that I'm talking about. And, and I said, like I said, the social worker conversation last week, I mean, talking about reshuffling resources, the decision was no, we absolutely can't do that. So, that's a golden cow to this board, based on that meeting. So, I mean, those are the kinds of conversations we need to, we need to have, and, and figure out where, where those things are, because if, if everything's a golden cow, I can't prepare you a budget that's going to meet the requirements that you, that Drew just Drew just suggested. Maybe that's not the requirement that the board ends up with, but I, but I promise you, I can't if there's lots of gold cows.
Well, when you look at the numbers, it's going to be close to that, I would think, when you look at tax rates.
It's true. And I'd like to make a comment about that conversation at the last board meeting, because walking into that as a board member blindsided, that's not how this budget system can go. Because that would have gone completely different if I'd had seven, eight, 10 days and a lot of conversations to be able to really analyze what was going on with that. Maybe not completely different, but there would have been a whole lot more less me feeling like I am completely uninformed about this decision that I'm being forced to make, and it has consequences. So I don't, I'm, I really am glad that we're starting this this early, because I feel like we can ask these questions now-
Yes.
-and I can get educated and not be put in that seat again. So it's going, it's going to work. It's going to be awful. But we can do it.
Yeah.
This is unprecedented, totally unprecedented. And I personally don't feel that I'm qualified to make these decisions without a lot of input from a lot of people. Because we can put our heads together and come up with our best decisions. You guys can crunch numbers for days and weeks and months, and we're still going to have a lot of very angry people who are going to be opposed, no matter what we do. That's the nature of a compromise. You make nobody happy. So I, I don't know how we're going to go about this without having a lot of input from a lot of people. So that's it.
Drew?
I think we have to go into this without any golden cows. We can't look at our education system and how we deliver education and put something out there that we can't touch. We have to be able to put everything on the table and look at reorganizing, restructuring, reducing, removing, everything on there. I don't see how we can not. We're in a very challenging time, and we've got to look at everything. That would be my opinion on the golden cows. And even things that we listed last year that seemed to be off limits last year, they need to be back on the table. Because we have to put something together that's responsible, and we can't look back at decisions from last year and say they're out of, out of reach for this year. We need to revisit everything.
I agree. I think you have to look at everything. And I think that we, you know, part of why we're doing this so early, at least from my perspective, is if we do agree that there are no golden cows and that everything is on the table, and you say these are the things that are going to impact the students the least, and is the best decision for Leland and Gray moving forward, what we have to wrap our heads around in these conversations in the next few months is that we have to then support that. That we said there were no golden cows. And yes, that's really an unfortunate piece to lose, but it's the best thing for Leland and Gray moving forward. And, you know, we're going to have to place a huge amount of trust in your leadership. Pull us through this, you know, this is a difficult time. This is a really difficult time. And we're going to, you know, we need your leadership, and we have to trust you. And that's, that's what we have to get in the next few months, is that trust to just, yes, this is not going to be fun, but we're going to do it.
Lob another grenade out of the table?
Oh, sure.
Building.
I was just going to say it myself.
So while we're talking about that amount of money, reducing, you know, what the impact on the tax rate is going to be, if at some point we're talking about some repairs and renovations that are going to need to be done to keep the building up to date, that's long overdue. You're talking about a bond, you're talking about the impact on-
Tax burden.
On all that, so just keep in mind, that's out there floating as well.
I know. You have a comment?
Yeah, I want to comment about the golden cow concept, because we really don't have golden cows. You know, the snowboard, being put, snowboarding being put back into the budget last year, that was about attracting tuition kids and about being in a town that is centered on the ski resort industry. That was a response to the community, which we need to support our budget and the bond issues. So it's not like we, we have these golden cows here, but we have, as the board, have to respond to the community, which means we have to pay attention to the people who show up. So, so I don't feel like we have golden cows. But since you did bring up that snowboarding thing, I also would like to know, when you do that list of which courses are being utilized by how many students, I'd like to also know how many of those kids are tuition kids? And how many are talent kids? Because as you pointed out at the beginning of your presentation, tuition money is the money that we can bring in. So we don't want to be eliminating courses that are attracting tuition kids. This is a big factor that public education has never had a deal with before. So, so there's, there's more, you know, there's a lot of pieces to this. You know, we want to give the autonomy to come up with a good plan. And no, there are no golden cows. If we could, if we could present it to the community as this is being a beneficial thing. So if we have to cut, you know, eight teachers, but we, we hire a half dozen teaching assistants that will then allow kids to take guided internet courses for whatever they want, that then becomes more palatable to the community. It's not like we're taking something away from people by this restructuring.
Okay. So I think this will be an ongoing discussion.
So, before we leave this- Can Bob and I just get a list of what you guys would like to see in June? And would you like, so for example, I think that we can give you an idea of what, you know, a June and a July, maybe a retreat, maybe a timeline. But we also, it would be helpful to make the next meeting productive, to know what kind of data you guys are interested in having. I think Howie had some very specific things that helped frame a conversation. I think if we laid out a timeline of what we would need to do, and you guys can go, that is absolutely not enough time, we're going to need to dive in more. You know, and a communication plan to make sure that we get all of our citizens out to give us feedback, and students to give us feedback. We want to take advantage of this time and be completely transparent about the, the challenges that we face and get the amount of feedback. So anything you can give us now that we can work on in between would be helpful.
I have a question. I, I would really love to see, I don't know if there's a way of seeing what our alumni have done for the past, like, several years, but it'd be interesting to see what Leland and Gray has produced as a entity for students going to college to pursue what? Like, is there a cumulative direction that children leaving, or kids leaving the school end up going into? Is there a way to push that? Is there a way to, you know, back off on things based on what the framework of the, you know, future ecology of the students are? I'd like to see just what the alumni are up to, I guess.
I was interested in that, and I asked about it a few years ago. It's very difficult to track students two or three years out.
It's all voluntary.
Yeah, and, you know, the quality of the data, two, three years after graduation, it's, your sample is very, very small. Because a lot of them move out of the area, they just don't keep in touch. That's the problem.
Yeah, it is hard. There's a service that you can purchase a subscription to that tracks them in college, and the success of her second, third year, fourth year in college. But that doesn't track kids who are going to the workplace or military or that, and it doesn't, it only, it only works with colleges who, members of the subscription service. It's called National Clearinghouse. So, I mean, it's a way to do it, but it's going to cost money to do it.
Go ahead.
At some point here, and it doesn't necessarily need to be the June meeting, but I think a broader conversation is going to be important, too. And that is, you know, we know that our enrollment is going to continue to go down. And even if it levels out after 2021, which it might, we're going to look a lot different then. And we are, I mean, whether we want to call them golden cows or not, we know we're going to be making cuts. And we know we're not going to be offering the same things that we're offering necessarily today. But we know we still have to offer our students a challenging and quality education. So how do we do that if we can't staff a building and have all the, all the programs in the building? Are there other ways? And Howie brought up about online learning and all that. But there are other opportunities, too. And I would like to take the time, maybe it's during a retreat, where like you just mentioned, Bill, I don't know, but take the time to say, what, what is it, maybe there's a collaboration we can get into with Brattaville or something like that. Is there something we can do to help our students to be able to offer those programs and still keep Leland and Gray viable? Because if we can't, I will tell you, there's high schools all over the state right now that are looking at closing. And if we really think that there's value to this school, and I believe there is, because I do think that we're in a pretty remote location, although many of them who are closing are in remote locations. If we think we're going to keep this school open, I think we're going to have to reinvent ourselves. I really do. And I'm, and I'm concerned about that. And if we're not prepared for that, I don't think we're, we're going to be able to handle it well. And I'd like to have that conversation.
Go ahead, Drew.
I'd like to have some research on our market share. We talked about tuition students. What's available? Are we trying to build a, in-market to 10 students, 20 students? You know, what does it look like? Reasonable. Obviously, students could come from anywhere, but they're a reasonable distance. Are we reasonably going to expand our tuition students? Because we can invest a whole lot of money in trying to attract tuition students that are never going to come here-
That's right.
...because they're too far away, and they're just not there. So I'd like to know what that looks like. A little market research.
And, and a part of that is the competition that we have for tuition students, which, you know, we never had to think about in the past, but we do now. And it's not just from independent schools, it's from public schools as well.
Anything else for Bill and Bob?
I have one. The numbers of students that participate in our sports team. I know some schools, I don't know if there are any in the area, it's a pay-to-play basis.
Yeah, you can't do that in Vermont.
Okay.
Massachusetts has user fees, but Vermont's illegal.
Expand that to just all co-curriculars.
Co-curricular participation.
Yeah, you know, don't leave out music and drama. If we're going to look at, if we're going to look at participation numbers, do it across co-curricular.
Yeah.
You just can't, you just, you can't try, you can't do user fees. But we can look at the rates, like rate, participation rates you're asking about for different activities?
Yeah, and the numbers of-
And costs.
Yes.
Yeah, we've cut co-curricular programs before when we didn't have enough participating.
So I just wanted to see, it sounded like you were saying, Bill, to get a clear picture from us and from everyone. Are you thinking about putting a survey together? Is that what you were thinking? Or just, just you guys doing something? Is it beneficial to do a survey for students and parents? Or do you just want to take it as, or do we all just want to take it as the, our input?
It's entirely up to the board.
I mean, I personally feel like if we can come up with some sort of survey, the more, the more eyes on anything, the better. And especially if we're thinking we need to reinvent ourselves and create an environment that we want to foster in the future, I think we should try to get as many opinions as possible.
Yeah, I think we, I think we publicize what we're going to do, do as much public outreach as we possibly can, but we keep it in the meeting rather than a survey.
Yeah, you guys represent people in towns, you know.
Yeah, we should talk to our constituents.
How they feel about things.
Let them know what's going on.
I'm not sure how you actually-
Yeah, I was thinking, like, Bobman's point was right. Like, we want to, this feels like a lot of people we have to talk to, but how, if it isn't here?
Well, I would imagine, you know, I mean, once it starts to get out that, you know-
Big decisions.
I mean, wait, wait till the reformer has the headline, you know, "Board Considered $700,000 in Budget Cuts." My phone will ring. You know, people will come to meetings.
That's also a really difficult question to ask the community. That's like saying, okay, we've got to, we've got to cut 10 teachers. Which ones don't you guys like? Like, it's a, it's our job.
Well, that's why you have to come up with certain questions. You don't just come out like that and say-
Well, actually, that's what we have you guys for. They look at the programs and what's beneficial and what makes sense and, you know, what, how the school needs to run. And that's why, you know, Bob went to school for all those years and did all that, because that's what he, that's, that's what he's really good at. And then we say, yeah, that'll work, and support him in it.
I think the broad point that you're, you're digging at is what is going to be our consistent way to get feedback from the community? I don't know if it's a survey. I don't know exactly what the path is. But we have to hear from all those constituents or to inform our decision-making. And I think, just bringing that up makes me think about how are we going to do that in a systematic way to get that kind of feedback?
And I feel we're not in this form of approaches.
Right. No, no, that's why we're here, right? It's, it's May. We want-
Is it okay to pass this around outside of the meeting?
Yep.
It's online.
We should put it on our website.
We should send it to them.
Put it on the Leland and Gray Board website. They don't have to have a school website.
Host it on the Facebook page. There you go.
You could also put in the Friday notes if anybody wants to look it up.
You had something to add, Drew?
I do. I think the comment about, look, we got to cut $700,000, that's 10 teachers, let's pick the ones we don't like. That's the conversation that the board needs to completely stay away from. This needs to be without personality, completely. Unfortunately, in the last two discussions we've had about numbers, it was all about personality and not about program. And I think this discussion needs to be 100% about program for our kids and not personality. And this board should not take a position on whether we like a teacher or don't like a teacher. And that seems to be where we keep running into things, where the support is on an individual, on a person, not necessarily making decisions based on the program that we're offering. We need to stay at this level.
At the same time, when you do, I'm coming from, I, I grew up in Ohio, and we had a massive, I don't know if you guys know about Lordstown, that's where a lot of cars come from, but a lot of people were laid off. And no matter what happens, people are sensitive, and they take it personally, even if we're coming from the most objective place. Like, it's, it's a really difficult decision. It's, it's hard. We're going to have to make really tough decisions together and work it out. And yes, ask, ask the community by all means. But we could make the most educated, you know, informed, you know, future choice. And really, it's really tricky to not let someone think that they're, you know, take it personally. I'm just saying, it's as much as you want it to be that way.
I can just say, people are going to take it personally, but the board can't.
Right.
That's the difference. I mean, we absolutely have a role to play that is going to be really challenging and different than what we're used to playing. But we've got to do it anyway. And, and people are going to be upset. And people will take it personally and say it's about that person. But for us, it can't be about a person. It can't even really be about a program. It has to be about the school and what we're offering our kids and what our kids need. And I know we can do this. With him.
Well, this is helpful. This, this will allow us to, to do some work before June and to start engaging in this very challenging, but yet, you know, thriving for the next generation conversation.
One last, one last thing before we move on, unless somebody else has some. I know you were teaching a class where you had students. No, that didn't go?
Didn't end up running.
Oh, darn, I was going to say.
I would have taken your class.
I would have taken your class.
Sounded interesting to me.
Yeah. No, I was going to say, I was going to say when, I was going to ask when you would be ready to actually talk about what, what that showed. Because I think, you know, unfortunately, it showed that the students didn't really want to talk about where we go next.
Yeah. It was, I mean, it was late, it was late in the game, because I was trying to pull kids out of study hall, and they were used to a certain level of-
Freedom?
-downtime. And I think it was just a tough sell, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I was going to, because that would be an interesting thing to add to this. Because that's, you know, that's a contingent in this that-
Well, the Student Council is doing a retreat on Wednesday with me to reinvent themselves. Because we've, we've had some challenges with that organization as well around what their task is and what they, how active they want to be, and what kind of voice the students ought to have. And so we're, you know, that's, that's going to be an opportunity for me to definitely spend some time with kids. And we'll talk about a lot of the same kinds of issues.
Okay.
So that'll be fun.
Okay. All right. So, thank you. To be continued, right? Okay. Last thing was the piece that Emily added. There is a regional advisory board that sort of, they don't really govern, do they? They're just, they're an advisory board for the Career Center. And any school that sends students to the Career Center has, has the ability to be represented on that board. So there, there can be a Leland and Gray representative. Apparently, they meet tomorrow at lunch.
There should be somebody.
There should be a Leland and Gray representative. At my understanding from both Stephen and Lindell Bowles, who was the Brooklyn, it's once a month or once every couple of months you go. It's always lunch. The food is terrific.
Cooked it, students.
And it's very interesting. The Career Center Food Service Program cooks for you. And it's, you know, she, you know, everything I've heard of is it's a really enjoyable meeting. So if anyone is interested in volunteering to be the regi, the representative to that regional advisory committee, we could get you appointed tonight. we could get you appointed tonight, you wouldn't necessarily have to go tomorrow, but, you know, anybody want free lunch every couple of months? I know, I... All right, well, we try. If anybody becomes interested in this thing, don't hesitate to speak up. We will appoint you in a heartbeat to go do that.
I'll just say, we do spend quite a bit of money down at the Career Center, and our voice should be heard. And I worry some about, and I'm not, you know, I'm just like the rest of you, I'm cooked for time too. But if anybody can find time, even if they occasionally go, it, it, the small schools that feed into the Career Center have to have a voice down there. I hope we get somebody to replace Lindell.
Doesn't have to be a board member.
Yes, I think so.
Well, I mean, yeah. Do you guys attend those meetings?
I haven't, no. I have been to one.
So, so we don't typically have anybody, I know.
All right, well, if anybody has, finds their time freeing up...
Are you out of the way?
Drew, you're right there. Okay, so, the next is administrative reports. We've lost our students, but I looked at their, really, I'd like to, hopefully, we can get these administrative reports more too. We've all read them ahead of time, and anybody who has something they wanna really highlight or bring to our attention, or any questions on it. Yeah, I know Bob wants to talk, well, we can skip students, 'cause they're, they're gone. I can tell you, bubble soccer was really fun to watch. I understand it was really difficult to play.
Thirty-five hundred bucks.
It was hilarious. My, my stomach and face hurt from laughing for two solid hours.
Videos I saw were just hysterical, and it was so funny.
And the, the best team far and away was the, where they had two brothers, two pairs of brothers on opposite sides, and they just basically for ten minutes tried to kill each other.
Maybe make your T-boys out next.
They were, they made a sandwich. So, Bob, there was, you wanted to talk about it, Lee, I know radon. Anything else in your report that you wanted to talk about?
Well, the radon one is, I think, the big one. So, the last time we were here, we were getting ready to have that work done, that work has now been done. It gave, there's a, if you can see through the window there in the back, you see a white pipe running vertically. It's like a six or eight inch PVC pipe. That is the B-level suction point. So basically, what we have is a drill hole in the ground and the, and the concrete, they put that through. And at the top, there's a fan, and it sucks the air on. The theory is that if you get into beneath the concrete, there's crushed stone or there's loose gravel, then as it sucks, it pulls the air from other places from underneath the slab. It's a great theory if there was crushed stone or gravel underneath our foundation. However, they found a lot of hard-packed sand, which isn't that exciting, and isn't that good for the sucking of radon through. So, it's been installed. You can see the library has been reduced by a couple of ticks on the meter here, 5.9 to 5.7. The weight room, so this is actually, the weight room is where they're measuring, the suction down on D-level is actually in the water tank room, which is not between the music room and the, and the weight room. That one has been reduced more, but still above four. So, phase two is to put in bigger, more powerful exhaust fans to increase the suction. And the idea is that you suck harder, you'll get more radon. So we'll see, that's phase two, and the M and M Plumbing and Heating folks are gonna give us some new fans to try that out. If that doesn't work, one, there is one other alternative, I think, that they can do, they can add more pipes, obviously, but that gets to be, you know, kinda problematic. They can actually cut giant holes in the slab and put in some stone and try to like draw places, but that's gonna be a little bit more expensive than what we initially talked about. We're hoping the fan replacement will, will suffice. Dutton is going to be done in the next couple of weeks, and they'll test that space again to see how that one does. I think there's a higher chance that that will be a much easier mitigation. Not only because the, I mean, it's probably the same, well, much different soil and what's underneath it, 'cause the building's so much older, but also because the building's not as airtight as this one, in theory, it should be easier to mitigate. But you'll see a giant thing coming out the side of Dutton at one point in the next couple of weeks. So, still in the works, Lori and I talked a little bit about the, how to pay for this, and we're gonna use local money for now. If it gets to the point that, which means we're not touching the, we're not asking you guys to touch the capital fund yet. If it ends up being the more expensive route, then that might be necessary. The projected deficit that Bill had and that Lori had in her report that she emailed you guys could be higher, however, if there's some other work done on the local money prior to the end of the fiscal year. So, just be aware that that might, that might tick up based on more use for radon mitigation. The water test results, I think someone had asked for water testing. They test for radon and uranium, which is the element that breaks down, which creates more radiant, radon. Both of those passed with low, lower levels than what is required, so those are, both, both are safe in our drinking water. So that was the outcome, and I have all the written reports if, if anybody wants to see it. I don't remember who we identified as being on a committee. Buildings and grounds, subcommittee that we talked about creating. But if that group wants to start meeting more regularly, I think we can, I have reports to share and things that we can start to talk about as well, so.
I was on it.
I was on it, was it Drew, or you were?
So was Kelly, Drew, and Emily?
I think I was on it too.
Yeah, I think you were too, I think we were four of them. Can't have any more than five.
And that's the limiter where you start approaching a quorum.
Oh, I am happy.
I mean, you can get out if you want.
Was that, did that group have a name?
Buildings and grounds committee.
That's why I will email you guys some...
Is that an official subcommittee?
Yes, I think we created it as one, yeah, it's an official.
So we need to make sure that we have an agenda and we post it.
Oh, absolutely, that should be done, yeah.
Can the agenda be just coffee with Bob to discuss the radon?
I just wanna make sure that I'm doing it correctly.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'll be in touch about that. And then on the back of the report, this is information that had been requested before. So I tried to divide this in ways that would make sense. I know you're gonna, it's gonna take some time to kinda go through this and think about it, but just let me explain how it's set up, and then you can take your time and ask me questions later on. So for each of the subject areas, you see it down the side. Hopefully, self-explanatory, phys and health is a B, and H, faxes, family, consumer science. Tech ed includes the computer side of things as well as woodworking. So then we have average class sizes, and that's the current year, and I've divided it up between middle and high school, so you can see the differences. And then IS is independent studies. So illustrate for you guys that there are a number of students who do work independently with teachers. They're not part of a class size calculation, but it's work that the teachers are going above and beyond to do. And it's usually because stuff can't fit into a kid's schedule, or they wanna explore a topic in more detail, or some course that we don't have. So you can see, I'll just give you an example, so under ELA, our middle school average is 17.4. The range, I included as well, because some of these are, you know, the numbers are kinda all over the place. So I wanted to give you guys the range as well, so you knew what we were looking at. And then the high school is slightly smaller, 14.8, but, but you can see a pretty good sized range there as well. And electives are clearly small, and yet, and for independent studies. If you follow those rows across to the new year projected, these are based on schedule and have just built, that we're still populating with kids, but this is trying to give you guys a loose projection. You can see where we are, how that's affected the, the average and ranges and so on and so forth. You can see that the big, the big shift that you're gonna see, the, the middle school numbers aren't exact yet, but you can see that the numbers for middle school are in the 20 range, and that has to do with the way we've reorganized the middle school. So we've gone from two teachers teaching part high and middle to one teacher just doing middle in each of the core subjects. And we've shifted some of those people to the high school, and in some cases, those people were re, reductions, were riffs or retirements, so we didn't replace. So, currently, in the, in the four core subjects, we have one middle school teacher and three high school teachers. Except in social studies, we really only have two and a half, because of Journey East really takes up the other half. So that's why their numbers are a little bit higher. So you can kinda get a sense as we go through how these things are playing out. And, yeah. So as we get into more detail, for example, world language, you wanna know what, how does, we have three, we've had three world languages. Next year, we're only scheduling two because of our teacher on leave. How does, how do the two, or how do the three compare? You wanna get into that kind of level, I can certainly do that, but I try to scoop it by departments at times. So I don't know if that addresses what you're hoping to see, Harvey. I know you asked today about having it broken out with tuition kids, I can do that work as well, or hire that out to somebody else.
But... Direct that word.
Direct that word to somebody else. But if you have questions, you can either shoot me an email about this, or we can talk about next meeting, whatever, if you have your time to come. I just did this today, so I apologize for the waitiness, so.
Okay, any questions for Bob on that? Or anything in his report that he didn't touch on? Anything that you want to highlight, Bill, or any questions for Bill, folks?
Just, I wanna let you know that Bob had invited me in April to come and have kinda the conversation we had just now with the staff. Just to let him know, as we were looking at finances, the challenges that we're gonna be faced for our community, so that we can keep everybody well informed. And we are the first supervisory union in Wyndham County that actually has completed a side-by-side. Wardsborough had a revote, 98-57. So they formed a district with Dover, which is the other half of the West River Modified Unified Union School District, of which all the individual towns, seven through 12, in Wyndham, and pre-K through 12, and all the other individual towns are a member of. And Dover and Wardsborough are pre-K through six with seven through 12 choice, with Stratton and Wyndham and Marlboro following an alternative structure path.
Great. That might even take care of the Act 46 update. That was all I had, was Wardsborough I knew voted positively, and they were now working with Dover. I haven't heard, I, I know the other, I know everybody else was doing the alternative structure, but I haven't heard much about progress.
Um, no, you got three active committees, and they meet on a regular basis and kinda waiting to see what happens in the legislature on Friday to see, you know...
What are they waiting on?
They're just waiting for the same thing that you sent me, just the conference committee, and just, you know, have it all be, you know, locked and loaded, you know.
It's, it's done in the legislature, it just needs a governor's signature. And he will sign it.
Excellent.
Yeah, we know. Yeah, I mean, it got wrapped up, things get mushed together, but it's 513 now, it's H513, and it's a missing, they said, but it encapsulated all of, all of 122 and actually 130 and a bunch of other stuff.
All right, any questions on Act 46 stuff, ladies, gentlemen? Okay, buildings and grounds, we kinda covered, unless somebody has a question on that. Policy committee confirming the membership, we did that, right? It's Kelly, Ally, and Twyla. Right?
Yeah, we did that last time.
I apologize, that was my bad, holdover. Okay. We're to bills and pay orders. We have two, four, six, seven general fund warrants totaling $1,36,761.94, and three, four payrolls totaling $436,738.81, for a grand total of $1,473,575. Need a motion to approve those? Second?
Second.
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, you guys reviewed it, everything's all in order, it's all good? Okay, no questions? All right, so, any discussion on these at all, folks? All right, all in favor? It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills and pay orders in the stated amount. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
There is something, I was just gonna say...
You had to change something?
Well, like, well, there was, yeah, can we pull the minutes from the consent? It's like a whole paragraph that needs to get rewritten. When he starts talking about the reduction in force, Peter was confusing school social worker with math, and the math one...
So I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes of 4/11, and then you're gonna correct them. Skip the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay.
So now go ahead and tell them what you want.
So, Peter, in the minutes, on page two, the first paragraph talks about Mr. Tebow providing a document talking about the Counseling Department reorganization and discussing the plan to change the counseling staff. And then you go on to talk about the budget reduction of the math position. And then you say that Mr. Tebow asked the superintendent to do a reduction in force of .67 FTE for the school social worker. Point seven six FTE reduction was the math. Oh, school worker, social worker was a point six.
Math was point six seven.
Seven, yeah.
Six seven.
Yeah, it's a point six seven math, the social worker's a point six. Yeah, it's just, take that out. But they're just kinda melded together there, where I was reading that thinking, wow, that's really confusing. It should be separated by like, social worker, math. 'Cause math was, you know, there was nobody in that position, it was just not in use anymore, so we ripped it. But if you just change social worker to math, I think we're good.
I will take the change.
Sorry. All right, any other corrections to the minutes? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes of April 11th as corrected, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are done. Any other business tonight? All right, we just need a quick executive session to complete the superintendent evaluation. Need a motion to go in?
Will it be action?
There's no, there's no action after it.